You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cape Fear. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Good evening. We'd like to call the October 27, 2014 Fayetteville City Council meeting to order and ask Pastor Terry Alston with the Abundant Faith Fellowship Church to come forward, please. Lead us for the invocation. If everyone would please stand and remain standing through the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
What I has about, eyes closed, our Father and I God, Lord, here we are at this city council meeting. Father, we invoke your divine presence in this meeting. And Father, we ask you forgive us of all of our short sins and our shortcomings and our broken vows. Fathers, we gather in this place and convene in this meeting. We ask you to speak to these, our local lawmakers. Bless them, God, with sound wisdom and understanding that the decisions that they make, God, will be those that will benefit every citizen of this community. We thank you for those that's here now. Bless us in Jesus' name, we pray. Thank God. Amen. Amen.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Pastor Alston. Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Wright.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exceptions of 806. I'm sorry, with 8011 and 8014 and 8015. That we will pull for further discussion until next month.
Okay, Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Colvin with a second. Any discussion on the motion, counsel? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Got a question.
Oh, Mr. Moan.
Since those three items are on the consent agenda, I believe right now we're just approving the overall agenda and then we would pull those when we get to consent procedurally. I think that's how it's supposed to go.
That's correct. You could approve the agenda and then do the consent agenda separately to pull them off consent. Okay, so would you like to amend?
I'd like to amend that motion until we approve the agenda.
Okay, great. All right, Mr. Colvin. Right, any further discussion? All right, counsel, please vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. In the audience, we do have a couple special guests. Would like to recognize former state representative and former mayor Bill Hurley, who joins us this evening. He'll be up in just a few minutes to speak. Also, former city councilwoman Mabel Smith is in the audience. Welcome. Welcome home. And also, former county commissioner Johnny Evans is with us. So, a pleasure to see you all in the audience. Also in the audience is North Carolina State Representative Rick Glaser. Mr. Glaser, if you can come forward, please. And our Fayetteville Police Department Officer Sanders. Oh, come on, come on up. Sure. Join Mr. Glaser.
Yeah, they did. Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Welcome.
If it pleased the city council. It is really my honor to be here this evening and to make a presentation, a presentation that came about with the help of the mayor's office and with the chief's office. There was an article that appeared in the newspaper several months ago detailing Officer Saunders' incredible work with the homeless population of this city. For those who don't know, she's served in the military and served this country for eight years, has been on the police force, I believe, for 13 years and 10 years as its homeless officer. I had the opportunity to see her this spring and early summer in a trip at Operation Inasmuch and saw her respond immediately to a domestic violence call that Sue Bird gave her and saw her interact with people in the most compassionate and dignified and professional manner. And if you read that article this summer about the work that she has done with the homeless population of Fayetteville, approaching everyone in a tough way but with compassion, with humor and with dignity, treating them with respect, going far above the call of duty, whether it's giving blankets to the homeless on an embankment or water or food or giving them advice on which shelter they should be in. This is what policing is all about and really ought to have the highest recognition. It is therefore my honor, on behalf, I hope, of the mayor and city council and all of the state legislative delegation, Officer Sanders, to award you the second highest award given to any civilian in the state of North Carolina, the Old North State Award, which says it all in its beginning, which says, "For dedication and service beyond expectation and excellence to the great state of North Carolina and on behalf of the citizens of this state, it is now my honor, by the power vested in me by the governor of the state of North Carolina, Pat McCrory, to award you as the newest recipient of North Carolina's Old North State Award for service truly above and beyond the call to all of the most vulnerable citizens of this town." Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Glaser. Thank you most of all, Officer Sanders, for everything you do every day. You are everywhere. At this time, Councilmember Wright, if you would come to the podium and like to call Rodrick Baker, who is the chairman of the Homeless and Hunger Stand Down Committee, to join Councilmember Wright. We appreciate the work you do for the outstanding service you do for the unfortunate, less fortunate in the community. And...
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, would it be okay if those representatives for that committee would come and stand as you call them?
Absolutely. As Councilmember ARP calls your name, please come forward as well.
A certificate of recognition is presented to Janelle Lewis for her outstanding and dedicated service to those less fortunate in our community through her commitment to the Homeless and Hunger Stand Down. This 27th day of October 2014, signed Nat Robertson, Mayor, City of Fayetteville. And I'm just gonna, if it's okay for brevity, I'm just gonna read the names of the other ones who'll be receiving the same certificate. Ms. Mary John Williams. Mr. Wesley Fountain. Ms. Carla Fagan.
Please come forward as your name is called.
Mr. Don Bennett Jr. Ms. Dolores Taylor. Mr. Rodrick E. Baker. Ms. Crystal Moore McNair. Mr. Sylvester Harrison. Mr. L. Ron Pringle. Ms. Grace Pemberton. Ms. Julia Morales. Ms. Cynthia Shepherd. Ms. Mary Webster. Captain Jason Smith. Ms. Taylor Morgan. Ms. Pamela Story. Mr. Steve Rogers. Mr. Rodrick Ford. Ms. Peggy Middleton. Ms. Melody Clark. Ms. Janice Voder. And Mr. Eval McIntyre. I stand corrected. I'm sorry. It's Ms. Eval McIntyre. My apologies.
Mr. Baker, while you're at the podium, tell us something about your organization.
Let me speak first. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say how proud I am of this group. I served as the chair of this organization for three years prior to me being elected as city council. And so I know firsthand the hard work that it takes to put on an organization and put on an event such as this one. And I just wanted to commend you for a job well done and Minister Reddick for taking over and doing a great job as the chair of this organization. So let's give them a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Wright and the members of the Fayetteville, Cumberland County, it is my honor to accept these recognitions on behalf of the community Homeless and Hunger Stand Down. We definitely appreciate you. And the 2014 Stand Down will be held on Friday, November 14, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the VFW Post 6018 at 116 Chan Street. And what we do at our event, we offer a one-stop location for homeless veterans, individuals and families or those that are at risk of being homeless. And what we do in this event, we provide public, we have public and private agencies and volunteers and sponsors that assist in getting prescriptions, flu shots, free haircuts, free lunches, and job placement assistance, health and dental screenings, housing assistance, education assistance, veteran assistance, blood pressure screening and much more. And for more information, you may contact me at my personal number at area code 910-728-5614 or Crystal Moore McNair at 910-483-1179. Once again, it is my honor and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for what you do, Mr. Baker. Ms. Jensen, if you'd go down to the podium, please. And I'd like to call Ms. Jennifer, is it Los Cleet? Up to the podium as well, please. Ms. Los Cleet. Oh, there she is. You were in the overflow room, weren't you?
I am the perfect person to be presenting tonight. She walks in. Running late.
Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
Hello. There's quite a few recipients that we're gonna name. Are they in the overflow room as well?
No, I'm not sure. I've only seen maybe one.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for being here. At this time, I will read the certificate of recognition. This is for civic excellence and dedication to making City of Fayetteville a better place for the future generations. The certificate of recognition says, "On behalf of the members of city council and more than 208,000 residents, we hereby present this certificate of recognition for your civic excellence and dedication to making this city a better place." At this time, I'd like to call the recipients. Adam Hecamp. C. Khan. Quashana McDougall. Alisa Moore. Macy Nash. Elena Peters. Harrison Ray. Molly Rose. Jane Schaefer. Nadia Schultz. Jennifer Stevenson. DeShawnee Suggs. Grace Truel. Justin Wordsworth. Stuart Williams. Anthony Wren. Alisa Faith Allen. Grant Bennett. Allison Boone. Rebecca Bullard. Wallace Cameron. Shatina Carr. Cedric Craig. George Crowley. Allison Elroyd. Oh, we've got somebody. Yay! Let me read your name again. George Crowley? Thank you so much for being here.
Do I need to get up, George?
Allison Elroyd. Emily Fox. Amanda Goldberg. And Malia Haney. Since we have George and Jennifer, I don't know if you all want to take a moment to just explain about your civic excellence?
Um, I had the opportunity, me and everyone else in the group, but they're not here, so. We came and talked with Mayor Robertson and learned a lot about what it takes to run the city. And we even got the chance to run a mock meeting, like how y'all are doing today. And, um... Oh, I mean, this is not a mock meeting. What we did was a mock meeting. I apologize. And, um, I had a good time and I learned a lot, so, thank you.
Thank you, George. Good job. Counsel, at this time, we'll move to...
Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement, please.
Oh, Mr. Crisp, thank you.
There's a song that starts out, "Do you like good music?" And Fayetteville, if you do, listen to this. Because the Armed Forces Command, the Army Ground Forces Band, is gonna be hosted by our own Fayetteville State University and the JWC Brook Auditorium on Sunday, November 9, at 3:00 p.m. The price of admission is to show up. But you better get there early because I can almost assure you it's going to be a packed house. Again, the Army Ground Forces Band will do a salute to veterans celebrating America's heroes, Sunday, November 9, at 3:00 p.m. in the JWC Brook Auditorium sponsored by the Fayetteville State University, our own university. Be there, you old veterans that love the sound of the drums. Come on out and like good music. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. I apologize for missing you on the printed agenda. At this time, we'll go to the public forum, which is item 6.0. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in the city. However, due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited up to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city only. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with a city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may appear on the agenda later, we ask that you reserve your comments until that item comes up. So when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address. Then when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see them change to red, your time has expired. And again, due to our policy restrictions, we are not able to extend the time given. There are more than 10 people signed up at three minutes each. That's 30 minutes. Your time will expire. So we ask that if you don't have three minutes worth, that you don't take your three minutes. Be courteous enough to pass that time on. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Lawrence Frauley.
Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Lawrence Frauley. We live on Rock Spring Road in Montclair. I'm here to ask for your help with the streets in Montclair. Many of the streets in Montclair sink above the lateral and main lines, which, by the way, these are less than 20 years old. I've informed by PWC that the problem is the soil above the lines was not properly tamped during the initial installation of these lines. But I'm also aware that the lines under Glensford Drive required additional repair. Some clamps and such had to be replaced. Related to the initial installation, other work was required to extend the laterals. This caused approximately a six-month delay to be issued. I think there's a combination of faults in the other lines that all originate from the initial installation. I would like fault to be determined and any and all action to recoup costs be done as soon as possible. I do not want the taxpayers, the ratepayers, to shoulder all the expense every time. The current patching of the roads is poor at best and not effective at all since the road continues to sink, some places as much as four inches in a month. We are left with roads that are sometimes so rough as to be dangerous. I got two more things. I'll try and get them done real quick. During the past two neighborhood meetings with the contractor, PWC and DOT, I requested that the section of Glensford Drive that runs past two schools be finished and completely open as soon as possible. The need is to get the orange and white barrels out of the way and make safety for the children. Drivers have a habit when there's orange and white barrels around to only see the orange and white barrels. We got a lot of little kids in that neighborhood and I don't want to see one of them hurt because of this. Last but not least, the Greenway Strip that is intended to go down the middle of Glensford Drive, before that goes in, it gets all landscaped. Please have some contract in place to take care of it. Or don't do it. pave it over. I don't want it looking like the stretch closer to the mall, which is all overgrown most of the time and looks crappy. This is a neighborhood. This is not a business district. Either do it right or don't do it. Thank you. If you've got any questions, I can give you some more specific information if it's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Frauley.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. J. Hatch. Mr. J. Hatch. Not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Hunter Evans. Mr. Hunter Evans.
Mayor, members of the council. My name is Hunter Evans. I reside at 2974 Evans Derry Road, which is adjacent to the Cumberland County Business Center. And I would like for you to recall the meeting at the Crown when Sanderson Farms, with Project Destiny, put forth the footprint of what is to take place within the park. The crucial evidence or crucial information was left out and I would like to point this out with these maps if I could. This dotted line is going to represent the Cape Fear River. This is the business center. What we have here are 1, 2, 3, 4 parcels. This would be I-95. These parcels here are options obtained... These parcels here are options obtained by Sandersson Farms, and these parcels ought to be used as spray fields to spray the wastewater up to one and a half million gallons of water a day. And please note, everything is adjacent to or very close to the Cape Fear River. We already have an overloaded system. This parcel number four, which is located on Cedar Creek Road, is right next to the Assisted Living Cumberland Village and extends to the end of Deep Creek Road. It also borders the Cape Fear River. This is, uh, information I think that the city council, Cumberland County Commissioners, and the people in the city and the county should realize. Given that, I would like to read a statement right here, please. We asked the city council to require a thorough, neutral, and comprehensive assessment of the environmental impacts be conducted as part of any agreement entered into with Sandersson to locate the plant in Cumberland County. An alternative, we asked the city council to require environmental impact study be conducted before the Commissioners enter into any contract with Sandersson in the county. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Prince Tuttman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My address is 5721 Azora Drive, Holt Mills, North Carolina, 28348. As she said, my name is Prince Tuttman. I'm one of the proud founders of the outsider, uh, street riders here in Fayetteville, along with the Social Club. Um, the reason I come to you this evening is to promote our food and clothes drive that we've been doing for the last, uh, three and a half, four years at the abandoned parking lot next to, uh, Kimball's Furniture. Uh, we're doing it again this Saturday, November 1st, from 10:00 to 3:00. Where we'll be passing out, uh, free food and, uh, clothes that we picked up from various donations from members of the, of the bike community. As I said, we've been doing this for a long time. Uh, we're just letting the city council know, and you know, sir, we're just not out here riding bikes and doing all this other stuff you might see or whatever. We're part of this community too. We do care. I, myself, most of us here are in the military. Uh, I used to be in the military, retired, from officers on down. I, myself, I just, we put in my, uh, retirement paperwork. I'm about to retire after twenty-five years, 2015 Halloween. So we do care, thank you. We do care about our community. We've done various things such as, uh, school supplies, uh, collecting school supplies, uh, toys for the kids in Cape Fear that won't be able to come home for Christmas this year, um, breast cancer awareness, lupus awareness. We're doing everything to show you that we're just not out here riding our bikes, throwing wild parties or whatever that, like, any, that, any negative that you may hear or see on the news. We're a community. This is our community. We're with y'all, and whatever we need to do to make a difference. I, myself, and the rest of the bike community here, we're tired of making a scratch. We want to make a dent. And we're just here to show everybody that this Saturday, as always, we're going to be in this community, doing what we do best, which is giving back. Thank you.
What do you ride? What do you ride?
Um, I just got a '08 Road Glide, bright orange. Can't miss me. So don't hit me. Don't hit me.
Would, uh, all the members of the, uh, the club stand, please? Thank you all for doing what you do. Look forward to riding with you sometime.
Thank you. If, uh, please, if anybody has any clothes to donate, from hats, shoes, blankets, whatever the case may be, please come on out this Saturday to the abandoned parking lot next to Kimball. We're taking everything so we can give back to the community. I appreciate it, and God bless. Take care and be safe.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Ride safely.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Ronnie Peel. Mr. Ronnie Peel.
Hey, Mr. Peel, how are you?
Fine, fine, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ronnie Peel. I live at 210 Raven Oak Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Matter of fact, I was born here. I was born in this building, right here. I've been here for a long time. But I'll tell you something. I'm disappointed in the city council and PWC. You pick the people in PWC, if they don't agree with you, you need to go into a back room and discuss it. It don't need to be in the newspaper. Your dirty laundry needs to stay in. Now, PWC saves me fifty dollars a month, six hundred dollars a year on my bill. I don't care what you do, but, but you take money from me, I'm not going to vote for you. You know, I need the money. Y'all might not need it. But I mean, we got the best PWC going. And I don't know what the problem is. Don't want to know the problem because it doesn't concern me. It concerns y'all. But it don't concern the newspaper and everybody going. Where'd Miss Daly go? Miss Daly?
She went to talk to the motorcycle group.
God. Well, that's, that's what I got to say. And, uh, we go through this problem every time. I'm not going to say it's the city manager, but it seems like every time we get a new city manager, we have trouble with PWC. You know? And, uh, if it was left up to me, I'd have to cut his pay about a hundred thousand. You know? I'm not trying to keep up with, with the Joneses. But, uh, but we need to stop and think about what's going on and, uh, how, how you hurting our citizens. And another thing, you know, I've called three or four of the city councilmen. The city, if it, you work for the people. If your telephone number is not up at the mayor's office, his number is not your number, your personal number. When you run for office, he can get a hold of you. But now, some of y'all you can't get a hold of because you have to call the mayor's office. And that's BS. You know, your number should be out for anybody can get a hold and call you. I called Jim Mark, and I reamed him out the other day, just how I felt. And, uh, he heard me.
This is true.
I mean, the bottom line is, I'm a citizen. I was born here. I'll probably die here. And, uh, the bottom line is, y'all running the place, but let's get it together. Let's don't put our dirty laundry out for, for my daughter in Charlotte calls me and says, "What's going on down there?" You know? And it's a shame that I have to come up here and say, say, say that y'all, you know, y'all have embarrassed me. Y'all have embarrassed the whole city of Fayetteville. I thank you.
Mr. Peel, I just want to be clear. This was not City Hall when you were born here. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. James Pop. Mr. James Pop.
Name is James Pop, 101 Goodyear Avenue, 28303. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for hearing me out tonight. I just wanted to share my perspective on crime in my little portion of the city. Seems like it's out of control. I'm the one that's been communicating with you about the activities that going on in the Roy Turner Junior Park. October 8th, the Fayetteville Observer cited that there was a 6% drop in reported crime in the city. I feel the key word in that sentence is "reported." Who fills out the reports? Who makes the reports that are counted? The citizens or the police? In the twenty-two times I have called 911 in the past six weeks, now just to be clear, that number includes fifteen sex acts, three acts of drug crimes, and four cases of vandalism. Not one report has been written. Are we to believe that these crimes did not happen? August 17th, the Fayetteville Observer quoted the chief of police saying that officers have become gun-shy and directed his officers to stop drivers who commit serious offenses and to not be concerned by what he called regulatory stops. I believe it's called dirty driving. So maybe prostitution and drugs in a city park is not a serious issue. But I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, it is a quality of life issue. Nobody wants to live next to a, next to a bord- a bordor- excuse me, bordello. In yesterday's Fayetteville Observer, it reported that there was a drop in overall crime in the last nine months compared to the same timeframe last year. But the paper failed to mention the biggest causes for that crime drop. In January of this year, the jail expansion opened. On October 27th, 2013, a year ago, the jail had 568 inmates. It was full. We remember the stories of criminals getting unsecured bond and being released due to no room in the jail and being arrested again and again. As of this morning, there was 752 inmates locked up. That's 184 more criminals locked up that would have been walking free this time last year. As a resident of this city, this council voted to raise my taxes to pay for more police officers. I would appreciate more effort to help curb the illegal activity in a city park named after one of its fallen officers. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Donovan McGeechee. Mr. Donovan McGeechee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Donovan McGeechee. I reside at 608 Duckens Way, Fayetteville, North Carolina. On April 14th, 2014, I wrote a letter to Internal Affairs stating that I was, uh, labeled a gang-affiliated member. In doing so, I became a victim of harassment and slander from some officials of the, uh, Fayetteville Police Department. Also, some city employees as well. The reason I was labeled gang-affiliated was not justified in any way by any law enforcement official. After I pursued answers from law enforcement, after I pursued answers, law enforcement used slander and unethical tactics such as harassment of the owners I was renting a property from, stating I was selling drugs and alcohol on the property. The Fayetteville Police Department had no evidence, uh, on this. I then again contacted Internal Affairs to receive help on the matter. Internal Affairs gave me no help at all. They instructed me that the Fayetteville Police Department did their job and that there was nothing they could do. I then contacted the mayor's office and also city council for help because I feared I would lose my business and my name within the city. When I reached out to city council, there was only so much they could do. It all reflected back on whether or not the police department will resolve the matter. I stand here before you today, having lost my business, reputation tarnished, and asking that this not happen to any other citizen here in Fayetteville, in the Fayetteville area. If there is no one to review the police department other than the police department, when will a citizen be able to seek justice? In 2013, Fayetteville Police Department hand-delivered letters banning all gang members, causing, uh, confrontation between many citizens and police departments from the, um, Dogwood Festival. Many of these gang members were teens here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I ask you to seek answers on what qualified those teens to be considered gang members. Let me know if you receive answers. A young man recently was killed here in Fayetteville due to gang violence, and the Fayetteville Police Department had no leads and no cooperation from any teens or parents here in the city. Reason why I believe is the distrust in hand-delivered accusations of the proclaimed gang members here in Fayetteville Police Department. I ask the council to watch over the actions of those men and women who sworn to protect and serve. If not you, then who will seek justice for the citizens? Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Betty Jo Smith. Ms. Betty Jo Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Betty Jo Smith. I reside at 4340 Sids Mill Road, Fayetteville NC, Cumberland County. I've been a lifelong member of Cumberland County, resident of Cumberland County, just retired from the school soc- uh, school system as a school social worker, having served my thirty years of service. Um, numerous points have already been presented to y'all as to the reasons why we feel Sandersson Farm is not a good fit for the Cedar Creek Business Center or for Cumberland County as far as that goes. However, I feel it is important to point out the negative impact that Sandersson Farms will have on an already heavily populated, heavily trafficked school district that this business center encompasses, specifically Cape Fear High School, Matt Williams Middle School, JWC Brook, and Sunny Side Elementary Schools. With the addition of other surrounding elementary schools, these make up the attendance area number six. Our district encompasses the largest attendance area in Cumberland County. We cover approximately forty-five percent of the landmass. Cape Fear High School is the fifth largest of the fifteen high schools in Cumberland County. Mark Whitley, the planning supervisor for Cumberland County Schools, said that with Cape Fear's enrollment and Matt Williams' enrollment already, they're at capacity, and with the other number of the elementary schools, we feel like the volume of high school drivers, with the regular drivers that drive in that area, that these are justifiable reasons for our concern over the volume of heavy, environmentally unfriendly traffic that Sandersson Farms will bring to this school district, an area with no stoplights to help regulate speed and traffic that is already a nightmare at times when trying to pull out on Cedar Creek Road. And if you Google Cumberland County Schools, you'll find different descriptions given for the areas. We are the only one that encompasses the rich, the poor, the medium, the all. Um, my point is here, residents in the area have been accused of being called NIMBYs, and to that, I say we're guilty. Not only do we not want Sandersson Farms in our backyard, we don't want them in yours, and we don't want them in any backyard of Cumberland County. Is Sandersson Farm really the kind of business that we would see portrayed on this my hometown Fayetteville video we just saw, the beautiful Cape Fear River? All those other beautiful places? Are we going to take a tour of the inside slaughterhouse? I don't think so. If we're to remain an all-American city, we cannot have the many negative effects that Sandersson Farm's slaughterhouse is sure to bring. City Council and Mr. Mayor, you can do Fayetteville and Cumberland County much better than what you're proposing. It's time that you and the Alliance Group cut all ties with Sandersson Farms and bring us environmentally friendly business to the Cedar Creek Business Center. We would respectfully appreciate your willingness in rising to this challenge, as with this would be a great confidence builder for the community and county. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Bill Hurley.
Greetings. Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your public service, and I say that sincerely. Um, I'm here tonight. I know this is not a, a community agenda item right now, but it, it could be coming up again pretty seriously. This is an issue that I'm very concerned about. There has not been mentioned thus far publicly, as far as I know. Many of you know that for over thirty years now, a lot of us in this community, including you, have been working hard to improve the image of this city, not only for our region, but for North Carolina and the, and the whole country. We've come a long way. We have a lot to be proud of. One problem that I'm, that has not been mentioned that maybe we haven't thought of, and we should maybe get this out first, and that is the odor problem. And we mentioned feathers before, but odor. We know we have valley protein on the river, one mile from the market house. We know that with the chicken slaughterhouse, there's going to be a lot more of that gunk going into that feed processing plant. How many of you have or have not smelled from time to time the odor we have in our central city? With increased production, we have an issue, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. I don't know how you're going to regulate odor. I don't know if it can be done. But if you want to drive the people out of downtown, if you want to kill, close the restaurant business, if that, uh, situation does occur, a lot of our efforts in the past will be in vain. I don't think this plant would come within six miles of the city of Raleigh, Charlotte, Durham, Greensboro. There was no way it could come within six miles of the market house. And it's 6.6, really, to this, this society plant. Wanted to bring that to your attention. I hope I haven't used all my time, but I'm very concerned about that. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Iman Iraname Mohammed.
Greetings, everyone. With the name of God, the benevolent, the merciful, I greet you in peace. And that peace comes from God, not from man. That's the best peace you can have. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Let it be known that I am a Vietnam vet, very much concerned about the growth and development of Fayetteville and Cumberland County, and the great progress that we have made. We have much more to make. Fayetteville State University's homecoming is this week, so everybody get ready. Some of the 20,000 alumni have started coming into Fayetteville State's campus already. The city of Fayetteville was host to the State NAACP Conference last week. The city of Fayetteville was host to the state NAACP conference last week, and since I am a Muslim and founder of the Muslim community of Fayetteville and Cumberland County, Masjid Omeen Said, let it be known that the Muslim Congressman Keith Ellison spoke last Saturday at the Fuller Center off Bunce Road, did a fantastic job with Reverend Barber and Mora Monday. Also, it is time for Fayetteville to develop quickly and stop procrastinating the transit center that is supposed to be built in near proximity to here, off Robinson Street, Robinson Road. We need that very badly. Raleigh has one, Durham has one, the one in Durham where the city manages from is fantastic, it's phenomenal, and we can do better than Durham, quite frankly. Also, let it be known that PWC Board of Trustees meetings are open. We are a city, a country of laws. Some of the meetings have become closed. Open those meetings back up, and you will not have the city's budget cut ten million dollars. The state government will cut your budget if you don't follow the law. You owe us PWC, and we expect you to open the meetings. Lastly, let it be known that the Fine Arts Building, right next to the library downtown, that is not for lawyers and judges. We built that building when our good mayor was on the city council, Matt Robertson, on the city council many years ago. We built that building for the Fine Arts Department. Fayetteville State University professors came over and got with the city Fine Arts Department and built it for the children, the mothers and the childrens when they come out with strollers, and they want something for the children to do downtown, for the little babies and their parents. Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Tina Stoddard. Ms. Tina Stoddard.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Robertson and councilmen and women. I'm a little anxious because this is the first time I've ever done this, but I hope I get my point across. The address I am wanting to present in front of you is fifty-one eleven Haddock Street. It's in the Bonny Dune area. This property was property of my grandmother. My mother was raised there, and I also raised my children there until they were in high school, and we moved after that. I received a letter about four months ago. My father previously owned the property, then it was turned over and it was put into my husband's name about four years ago. Well, my husband and I have recently divorced, it's probably been about two years now, and during the divorce proceedings, the property was put over into my name. So, of course, all the, you know, problems and issues that go along with that were landed in my lap. I received a letter from the city. I'm not exactly sure if it was Mr. Rutherford or not. I just received this letter, so I wasn't able to get all my paperwork together, but I had a hearing date with him. I went in and the person that actually sent the letter to me, giving me all of the different things that were wrong with the property, was not available. He was not working at the time, and so the gentleman that took over for him told me that, gave me a list of some of the changes that needed to take effect for the house. All of the stuff that was inside and the porch, anything that needed to be fixed to make it livable, as long as I boarded the house, this is what I was told, as long as the house was boarded, the boards were colored to match the house, and the yard and all of the surroundings were cleaned up, then the inside, you know, would not be an issue. I did that, I had everything cleaned up, spoke to Mr. Dewberry, he met me out there on the property. He said he was in charge of all of the environmental stuff, so every, all of that was taken care of. He approved all of the cleanup, and I also own the property that's connected to the fifty-one eleven Haddock Street and all the way around the property, so actually, we own that whole corner section. But what he told me was everything was taken care of, and then I assumed that everything inside of the house didn't needed to be taken care of, and then I received this letter stating that it was going to be demolished after the ninety days was up, and I was not aware that that was going to happen, and I just wanted to see if that could be postponed or if we could get some other kind of arrangement going on so that I could keep the house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have reached the thirty minutes.
Okay, that will end tonight's public forum. Thank you very much for being here. Next is a report from our Boards and Commissions. Residential Rental Property Review Board Annual Report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. It's my privilege to be able to brief you tonight, and thanks for all you do for the city. I am not hostile. I'm Chet Ome, a thirty-year Air Force veteran. I still love Mr. Crisp and have been a property manager for thirty-one years in Fayetteville. Tonight, I will brief you on the Residential Property Review Board. The ordinance that allows this board was completed and adopted in July of two thousand and twelve. It is the result of the Rental Action Management Program, or better known as RAMP. As many of you know, the city staff has been working on an inspection program since August of two thousand and seven. We've had many ups and downs in RAMP, but have now have a viable working program. I have a great board comprised of seven individuals, two appointed by the mayor, one by the city manager, and four by you, the council. The Residential Rental Property Review Board considers appeals of property owners required to register their properties for disorder activity of registration for or certain code violations. The board's purpose is to ensure an opportunity for review of such RAMP reservations and revocations. Decisions of the board are appealable to the city council. The process begins with a written appeal of an issued registration notice or registration revocation notice. The appellant shall have a written notice of appeal to the city clerk within ten days of receiving notice of the action being appealed. The board should conduct the appeal hearing within thirty days of the date of appeal. The police officer or development services official shall prepare a summary of the case, including all relevant data. The summary shall be promoted, provided to the board and the owner at least five working days before the hearing. Before the appeal is heard by the board, staff reviews the appeal for timeliness and the basis for the appeal. If the appeal is justified, staff will administratively correct the adverse action taken against the appellant without the need of setting the appeal for a hearing before the board. If staff finds that the appeal is justified, the appeal is set for a hearing before the board at the next scheduled meeting date. Staff prepares all hearing notices and case documents for the board and the appellant. The purpose of the appeal hearing before the board shall be determined whether or not the staff has met the statutory requirements to require registration or renovation of registration. The appellant is entitled to make any statement or present or present any witnesses on his or her behalf. After hearing evidence, the board will either grant or deny the appeal. The appellant has the right to appeal the board's decision to the city council. The city council shall make its decision based on the record. A majority vote by the city council in favor of the board's decision is required to uphold the board's decision. If the city council upholds the board's decision, the appellant shall have the right to seek judicial review of the board's decision. City council has heard one appeal, and advice from the city council, a city attorney remanded the case back to the board to allow a record to be established. The board again denied the appeal. A total of eight appeal hearings have been heard by the board, one in two thousand and thirteen and seven in two thousand and fourteen. Four appeals were approved and four were denied. The increase in the number of appeals in two thousand and fourteen is attributed to an increased ability to track and process related violations. So far, we have had four hundred and fifteen cases in the city of Fayetteville from the police and the development services officers. Eighty-two are still active. We've had thirteen registrations, five are off the list, and eight are still active. In conclusion, the city staff is currently in the process of preparing a set of amendments after evaluation of the program for two years. We're trying to tweak the entire ordinance. The police and development service officers have been a great asset to this program and are very dedicated. We are still having problems with the correct address on tax records. As you know, the city inspectors, if they find a violation, they send it to the owner that's on the tax record. Unfortunately, in Fayetteville, we have so many military that have been PCSed and continually moved that their records are in very poor shape. I am currently working with the county tax office to come up with a program where professional property managers can assist in updating their records, and this is most important to our owners because of the reevaluation coming up in two thousand and seventeen. Also, House Bill seven-seven-three, which covers inspections for the state, has been in the Commerce Committee since two thousand and thirteen. However, will probably surface again when the state session reopens in January. I'm trying to set up a meeting next month with the mayor, city staff, and our state association government affairs officer, and Senator Meredith, who is on the committee, because our city staff has some disagreement with the proposed bill. What also I would like to thank is Andy Barksdale for his article, "The Beginning of October", which indicated about the RAMP program, and since he mentioned my name, unfortunately, I've had a lot of calls and tried to explain the program. This concludes the briefing. Thank you for listening. The board needs your support, and if you have any questions, I will try to answer them. And also, I have Mr. Rutherford here with me, who's the developments officer. Are there any questions?
We do have a question or statement. Mayor Protim Davy?
Thank you so much for your presentation. We're so proud to know that you all are working really hard on the RAMP program, and thank you so much for providing. That was going to be my question, what suggestions you all had to revamp and make sure that this program is doing exactly what you need it to do for the community, so I'm glad that you all are being very proactive about getting engagement on this early, before the General Assembly starts again. So, thank you so much, and please keep us informed with what's going on.
I think that it's an education process with all of our landlords. We had a landlord come in last week, had a tenant that could not speak English. My question's to him, as a professional property manager, what kind of lease do you have for him? What kind of background? Have you checked IDs, credit reports, or anything? So, let me just say one thing. About six years ago, Chief Burge, mine, we had a, the association put on a session with an attorney, with two magistrates, with police officers, and also inspectors, and that's when we were having a trouble in A and B Street. And we invited a hundred and seventy-eight property owners, and we had all the brochures there and everything for them and all the speaking. We had one couple show up. So, we want to try that again, but we have to have the interest of these landlords, okay? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your work. Council, we'll move to eight point zero, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Arp?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would move that the council approve the consent agenda with the following modifications: that item eight point zero-two-four be modified, specifically the address of five-one-one Haddock Street be taken off of the consent agenda for consideration at the November third council work session, and that item ten point zero-two be moved to the consent agenda for acceptance and funding.
Ten point zero-two to appear on the consent. And five-one-one-one Haddock Street, which is item, a part of item eight point zero-two-four to be tabled until November third. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wright, you had a couple of changes as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we pull for future discussion until next month items eight point zero-one-one, eight point zero-one-four, and eight point zero-one-five.
Eight point zero-one-one, eight point zero-one-four, eight point zero-one-five to come back at a later date.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Recognize that motion by Mr. Arp, seconded by Mr. Wright.
I made the motion. I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Very good. All right. Well...
Those are two, those are two separate motions.
About, how about, Mr. Mayor, since we can't have two separate motions, I'll accept the friendly amendment Mr. Wright offered to my motion.
Absolutely.
Very good. Very good. And Mr. Wright's the second. Council, discussion on the motion, please. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote on item eight point zero with the changes. Oh, I gave it away, didn't I? That is nine to one with Mr. Moan voting against. Let's take, Mr. Hume, while you're getting ready here. We'll take a five-minute break, please. We'll take a five-minute break, please.
...over to the mall. For, besides providing service to the Fayetteville State, it also fills in a gap of service that we've been working on for some time along Country Club, Pemlee. We've not had service there. The map just shows landmarks. It doesn't show that all the stops that we will be implementing as we put in this route, but just major landmarks. It is a route, again, although Fayetteville State is helping us pay for this route, it is open to the public. We have scheduled it to sort of fit into the budget, that it would operate from 6:30 in the morning to 2:00 PM with one bus, so it's a two-hour headway at that time. And then at 2:00, around 2:00, 2:30, we'd be adding a bus. And then it would run till 8:30, except on Friday and Saturday evenings. On Friday and Saturday evenings, it would run till 10:30, which is when most of our services, night services, end. We have tried to engage the public. We have flyers that we've put out at the Transit Center and on our buses. We had flyers that we put out at Fayetteville State and at Millermott College. We had two public workshops over the last couple of weeks, one at Millermott and one at Fire Station 14 next to Fayetteville State. And then we had some customer face-to-face meetings at the Transit Center. And then tonight's the public hearing. We've had fourteen comments so far. Our fourteen people attended our meetings, all of them were positive. The only suggestions that we had was to extend the hours Monday through Thursday to 10:30. We don't have the budget to do that yet, but it's something that we will continue to work on.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Madam Clerk?
May we just have one speaker for this item in opposition? Mr. Iman Eronemi Mohammed? We have no further speakers, ma'am.
All right. We will open and close the public hearing. Counsel, is there a discussion or a motion? Mayor Pro Tim Davie first.
Thank you. I was going to make the motion, but I will hold off if people have some more discussion.
Okay, Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Hume, I really appreciate the expansion of these routes. I think it's well needed, you know, for various reasons. I have a couple of questions now. I've witnessed a few places on the existing route that don't have seats, don't have shelter. And so as we expand our routes, what is the plan of your department to help with some of the bench seating and some of the other needs that exist?
Yes, sir. We've adopted, you all have adopted, service standards that outline where we will place shelters and benches, and it's based on how much they're used. And so we're looking at those regularly, and of course, then we get suggestions for them too, and we will check those spaces. We have several that we're working on right now. Again, when we add a bench or shelter, we have to make that location ADA accessible, and sometimes that's what takes some time, particularly along state roadways. So that requires a pad as well as sidewalks leading to that pad. But we are working on several of those. In fact, we had a meeting today of several that we're getting ready to go out for bid to be able to install those. And again, we talked last week, I think, about a couple of locations you were concerned about.
Ms. Jensen?
My question was basically the same question, but the one that we're looking at Ramsey Street, I guess the two new stops, have you all already put padding there for them?
We have pads on north Ramsey, north of Methodist.
Right.
We were able to put bus pads in when they did the sidewalk project. The state did that at that time, and we were able to do it together. On the other side of the street is where we're doing the construction project, near the apartments down there between Andrews Road and Methodist. And that is a location where there are no sidewalks. There are sidewalks on one side of the street, there's no sidewalks on the other.
Okay.
And so we have a project that we're getting ready to bid, where we will be adding sidewalk there so we can put in the bus stop.
Okay. So these are on the right side of the road as you're going north on Ramsey Street?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hume, I just want to take a second here to try to add in, this is a great initiative, and I think it's good for our students at Fayetteville State. But I want to ask very briefly about the high school passes. Do we have any updates on the high school passes and the kids that are using that? How many kids are using these passes?
We have none that are using it. We sent something out last week to all the, we sent it through school transportation to all the athletic directors and to the principals and to a couple of counselors that we've worked with. We have one counselor that has come back to us to ask for those passes, but they are available now. The application that we want them, or the form we want them to fill out, is also online, and we have a place on our website where we're doing that. But we're, again, we are managing that through the schools, through the athletic directors and through the school principals.
But to date, we've not had any high school?
We've not issued any passes yet, but we have those available, and we hopefully will this week.
Mr. Chris?
Mr. Hume?
I'm often getting questions about why no benches and shelters. And I think the citizens need to understand that on these thoroughfares that belong to North Carolina DOT, we don't have the exclusive say-so to put shelters and benches.
That's correct.
Also, they need to understand there's a considerable cost involved when you start putting simply a bench, because it's got to be ADA compliant, non-skid, all of that, as well as about $13,000 for a shelter, right?
Somewhere between $10,000 and $12,000.
Okay, $10,000 and $12,000.
That's what we normally use.
I was counting inflation in there. How are you going to get that message across? Because I keep getting inquiries from people, for example, on Strickland Bridge Road, why no buses and shelters? And of course, there's a ridership involved, and a bench, ten or less?
Or?
Or ten or more, twenty for a shelter.
That's correct.
How are you going to get that information out?
Well, we've, again, we entertain requests for them all the time, and we try to explain it at that time. Again, we have several locations that we've identified where we have that type of ridership that we're wanting to install shelters or benches. And again, those are the ones we're working on right now. Again, we have those service standards that have been adopted by y'all, and that's what we try to follow as we do that. We have one exception to that, is that we do have a program we've been working on for people that want to sponsor and really pay the local share for that, for the city. And so in those situations, we're a little more lenient in terms of the ridership.
Let me be very direct.
Yes, sir.
How are you going to keep them from calling me for me to explain all of this to the riders and citizens? That's my question. I know the answers, but I don't know whether there's some changes that have taken place. For example, I said about, I told somebody a shelter costs about 13 grand, and you say 12, so I've overstated the case, all right? But there are other council members that may have these questions asked of them, and how do we get that information to those citizens? Maybe a flyer to us so that we have the answers readily available. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Wright?
Yes, just a follow-up question on Mr. Chris's question. I noticed that some buses stop in the middle of the road, like on Rayford Road, for bus stops. There is nowhere for them to go, and they pick up pedestrians from there. I inquired about a bus stop on Riley Road, past Clifdel Road, past that McDonald's going, hitting Rim Road. There's no bus stop there. And when I inquired, it said DOT, it's a DOT road, I don't know, and it has to be a bus stop or a curb or something put there. We really need to look at that, because the citizens walk about a mile to get to a bus stop to get to work. And so if we could really look at that area right there and see if we could do something. And if that's the case, what can we do to make that happen?
Thank you. Mr. McDougal?
Number one, I'd like to echo the thought of Councilmember Chris. I get that question all the time, and I do tell them 12,000, but they don't back up. Secondly, I was also asked by the community there about FSU, the reason for not bringing the bus all the way down to, like, Coley, and maybe turning and even going across the campus or coming down Coley and turning out. I did tell them, and I thought, just from being at the fact meeting, was the delay in that light not being a normal sort of light there. I thought that's what you all told me.
That's correct. We did look at that when we met with the Fayetteville State people, and we looked to see if we could make that turn and go down that way. The difficulty is, is there is housing over there. Of course, the other residential housing on the campus would be farther from. The other was when we tested it, that light did not always change when we were sitting in, with our vehicle sitting in the left-turn lane. And so the traffic would be released to come toward us, the traffic would cross, released to come toward us, and our light would never change until someone came to the right-hand lane. I'm not sure why that was doing that with our vehicle. That's what occurred.
It was not something that we could work out with DOT or with traffic services.
We, again, we can work on that and see what we can do. But again, I think that as we were meeting with Fayetteville State, they eventually agreed that what we had planned to do was a good service that they would do. But we will continue to work with them. Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim Davie?
Thank you, Mr. Hume, for your presentation. At this time, I'd like to move for the motion to approve the new transit route.
Second.
Number four, transit route number 11.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Davie, seconded by Councilmember McDougal. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Chris, are you voting, or you got a?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right, counsel, I'll ask you to push buttons. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 9.02 is the issuance of a special use permit to allow daycare center in SF6, which is a single-family residential district located on Powell Street. Mr. Harmon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Since this is a special use permit request, if we could get all the speakers who have signed up to join me over here with our clerk so they can be sworn in.
May we have no speakers for the special use permit item?
That was easy enough.
That was easy. We'll open and close that public hearing. Counsel?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Mayor Pro Tim?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the special use permit?
I'm sorry, Mayor. This is a special use permit, so we will need the presentation of staff before you can move forward with a motion.
All right. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Harmon?
We just need this for the record. I'll try to be brief since we have no speakers. Crested Action is a special use permit for a daycare to be located at 1719 Powell Street. Give you an idea of where that is. The property actually fronts Powell and backs up to Gillespie. It's near the intersection of Gillespie where Trade Street comes off of Gillespie and heads towards Southern Avenue. This is a previous daycare that was run by the church, this facade of it, but now a single individual is looking to open as a daycare, and so they need a special use permit for that. Currently out in that area, mainly low-density residential on the north side of Gillespie, with the exceptions being business to the east and the church to the west, and then to the south across Gillespie, commercial and industrial uses. Land use plan calls for heavy commercial across the street, across Gillespie from the property, and medium-density residential on this particular property. This is a photo of the front of the home from Powell Street, and this is a photo of the rear of the home from Gillespie. The conditions that have been offered in this case are operating Monday through Friday, all shifts and weekends, no more than 25 children at a time, no more than 10 employees, and removal of the fencing in the front of the property to comply with the UDO. Zoning commission and staff both recommend approval. That's based on the property has served as daycare in the past. Property is located along a major thoroughfare. Property meets Property meets distance requirements set by the UDO, and there are heavy commercial uses and zoning on three sides of the property. Any questions on this particular case?
Mayor Pro Tim Davie.
Thank you for the presentation. At this time, I will move to allow the special use permit for the daycare center located at seventeen nineteen Powell Street.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Counsel, is there a discussion on the motion, please? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, that's unanimous. Item nine point zero three, rezoning a property from single-family, ten residential to, I'm not wearing my glasses, LCCZ, limited commercial. Mr. Harmon.
This property is located to southwest corner of the intersection of Fisher and Lakewood Roads. Give you an idea of where this property is, again, Lakewood here, Fisher here. To the east, you're going toward Bingham Drive, to the west, near Strickland Bridge. Thank you. Mind slipping there. To the east, you also have the elementary school and middle school here and some newer single-family residential developments kind of surrounding the west and south side of the property. Property is, is currently in several things of undeveloped to, to single-family residential. You can also see that there are a lot of single-family residential around that area along with the Two Blues being the school there to the east. Land use plan does call for low-density residential on this particular tract. This is a photo taken, looking at the intersection there from Fisher and Lakewood, and then this is just along Lakewood looking into the property. This is a conditional zoning again, and as part of the conditions, the applicant has offered up this sketch plan, which was set aside, little over ten acres to be used for multifamily development, little over fifteen acres for commercial development, and then another three-point, about three-point-four acres for commercial or professional development. Along with that, the developer has had talks with DOT, and should this project go forward, DOT is going to allow them to put a stoplight at this area here so that they would have an entrance straight across from one of the entrances to the school. And the school system is very much in favor of that aspect. Conditions, again, the sketch plan that we just looked at, the following types of businesses would be omitted from the allowed uses in this conditional district. Rooming and boarding house, drug alcohol treatment, tattoo parlor, body, body piercing, electronic gaming, tobacco shop. And then, with the exception of the utilities installations, the applicant agrees to not clear the multifamily area or commercial-professional areas until he's ready to develop them. Those are the areas you saw on the, over, on the aerial map that still have trees on them. In addition to those conditions, staff would, for their approval, would require that, if approved, that the sidewalks be, and shed the characteristics of those described in the southwestern Cumberland, northeastern Hope multimodal congestion plan. Exclude gas stations from the list of allowed uses. Add an alternative sign package for coordinated signage and to limited, limit the number of pole signs on the property and to limit parking areas along Fisher and Lakewood frontages to no more than fifty percent inclusive of access drives. And with that, just a few photos of, of what, you know, what staff means by some of their comments, some of the developments. These are in some other places. We have a few around this way, but not many yet. Basically, bring in some of the buildings closer to the road, like you'll see in several of these pictures. This one, this photo is actually just down the road from the property at Lakewood and, yeah, Stony Point. Can't remember my roads tonight here. And so, these are some examples of, of what staff means by bringing, the, limiting the parking areas along the road frontages, having the buildings closer to the road. Another aspect that staff has, has looked at that they'd like to see is something more of a internal drive, this more like a road, where you can actually have on-street parking in front of the businesses as well. Zoning commission did recommend approval. That was based on those conditions offered by the owner only. The owners did amend their conditions at the zoning commission meeting and added tobacco shops to their list that was not in there before the meeting, and that they would meet the city's current development standards. Staff recommends approval only if conditions offered by the owner and staff are included, and that's based on conditions offered by the owner and those required by staff. And while the land use plan calls for low-density residential on the property, there is an electric transmission line that crosses the property and makes it a less desirable single-family residential development. The proposed multifamily sections of development would help buffer surrounding single-family from retail and office uses. The immediate area is currently almost entirely residential or institutional unless the development's done consistent with a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented neighborhood form, should not be approved. And then, lastly, with the addition of conditions, the development would have most of the flexibilities of the LC zoning districts with a few characteristics that would help protect the values and stability of residential areas, more in common with our neighborhood commercial districts. Any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
Mr. Hurst.
Uh, Mr. Harmon. I was just curious, on the October fourteenth zoning commission meeting, usually the zoning commission's unanimous. This was split. Any particular reason why? There were a couple that opposed?
Um, again, I think, I'm not sure exactly what the, the ones in opposition really were because they weren't near as vocal as the ones in favor. Really thought it was gonna be maybe a higher vote before they took the vote, so it kind of surprised me a little that it split that closely.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harmon. I know you talked about the, the traffic, the traffic light. You know, it's right across from a, a school. Can you give us a little bit more on how do you think the, the traffic's gonna flow, the congestion of it, and what have you done to, to prepare for that?
Well, again, it, it, this Lakewood being a DOT street, DOT is the ones who, they've been meeting with the developer, although they have been meeting with city staff as well to get the city's streets, people involved. And basically, the lower entrance to the elementary school down here, there's a, a real issue, it seems now, in the mornings and afternoons of getting buses and cars in and out of the school at the same time. And so, the school system, along with DOT, feels that adding that stoplight and having this developments, one of its entrances straight across from an entrance to the school, will help with a lot of that congestion.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jefferson.
Um, living on Ramsey Street and going through the median ordeal, you know, my neighborhood realized that with the medians, we got a stoplight, so it made the hit a little bit easier for us. I guess my question is, if this does not get approved, do they still get the stoplight?
Not at this point in time.
Okay.
That would be a DOT project in the future at some point.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Moan.
Thank you for the presentation. This question might be for you, Mr. Harmon, or it, it could be for Mr. Shuford. And it, it relates to the, the capacity of our existing limited commercial zone properties throughout the city and whether we have excess that's not being used, and, you know, before we continuously rezone, you know, residential properties for commercial. Just, do you have a ballpark figure? And I don't know if he has to be sworn in or not, since it's a...
It's not a...
Okay. Special use, just conditional?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. As we presented to city council on a couple of occasions, there is indeed an excess of commercially zoned property in the city, and that's one reason why we prefer to use the conditional zoning approach to make sure that what is being proposed is not speculative in nature and simply a straight rezoning. So, we did think about long and hard whether or not this, this particular additional commercial made sense in the, the realm of the greater city and came to the conclusion that if it was conditioned as has been presented by Mr. Harmon, it would be something that we thought was a good trade-off. Having said that, I, I do, again, want to caution council on the, the large number of commercial acres that we have that are not, not being fully utilized in, in the current state. But we, we are going to be headed towards the development of a comprehensive plan, which will help us understand all these relationships in greater detail, and we won't be relying on a, a, a land use plan that is, is somewhat outdated.
All right, counsel, no further questions. We'll move into the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have seven speakers on this item. The first five are speaking in favor. The first speaker is Mr. Stephen Riley. No, sir.
Just don't swear at us. Welcome, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, counsel. At present time, my name is Steve Riley, fifty-eight forty-nine Fisher Road, two-eight-three-zero-four is it. I live on said property, have all my life, okay? So, for my sister and I to take it up that we're gonna get rid of the family farm and get rid of family land, this was not taken very lightly, you know? I mean, land you've been on all your life, it's kind of hard just to walk away. We were there, grandfather came out there in thirty-nine, we'd been there, roads were dirt, nobody else was out there, it was all farmland. Since then, development has done what it's done. It's a little too crowded, you know? We're no longer Route Three, which was pretty neat. No longer Route Three, but we're a road name, and so we just deal with that. But it's, it's, it's come time for me and my sister, we wanna sell this property, move on, move to a little place that's a little quieter, and, and just get, and get away from everything that's there now, not that was there when we started. So, since we have become a part of the city, not totally, you know, but we're there, so we would like, we would like to sell it. We feel really good about our developer because we don't think he's gonna not rep, not respect the land that we have. This past summer, we planted sunflowers in our field, and it was pretty good. It was for my bees, me and wife like them. But, you know, any given day, there'd be ten to twenty people in my sunflower field. They'd park up and down the road, they didn't ask permission. It was their given right just to go out in our field and take pictures. And most of the folks were really good. They really were. I mean, we lost some sunflowers, and we had seven people out of the hundreds that went in the field. We had seven people that asked for permission. But it was just a little bit too pushy on everybody else's part on us. I mean, you didn't mind them being there, but at the same token, I didn't ask them to come. And so, I was asked if I'd do it again, and I really don't know if I'd do it again. But that kind of thing is what's making me wanna leave. So, you know, it's home, but it's time to go. Find something rural, you know? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Laurie Epler.
If you had some excess, you got a good price. She's been here before.
If you want to read, I'm sorry, but it will help. I don't know whether you have seen this actually, or not. It's the southeast, the southwestern Cumberland, northeastern Hope multimodal congestion plan. Staff, staff has asked us to comply with this plan in sidewalks and roadways. And if you look on the third page of it, there's a map there that shows the intersection of Lakewood and Fisher Roads. That map shows a roundabout at that intersection with two lanes of traffic going in every direction and sidewalks on both sides of the road. I sincerely hope that planning does not expect Mr. Riddle to build this road for this development, but that's what their condition for approval says, because that's what's in this document. If you'll go on the next sheet, rural village Main Street, that's what they recommend for Lakewood Drive. You have a sidewalk zone, a green zone with trees, you're going from one side of the right-of-way to the other, across the street. Sidewalk, green zone, parking, that's parallel parking on the side of the road. Shared vehicle zone, which I guess is like a high occupant, occupancy vehicle lane. Beside that is a motor vehicle zone, then a bicycle zone, more parking on the other side of the street, a green zone with trees, and an extra wide sidewalk. That's what they want on Lakewood Drive. The next page shows you what they want on Fisher Drive in cross-section, or on Fisher Road. Sidewalk, green with landscaping, shared vehicle, two, two lanes, wide median with landscaping in the middle, motor vehicle zone, two more lanes, bicycle zone, green zone with landscaping, and another sidewalk. That's what that multimodal plan calls for on these two streets. Planning hasn't told us we're only required to do that on our side of the street. They haven't told us we have to build, they've not given us any direction on what we're supposed to agree to in these conditions that they've put on this approval. We've made every effort to deal with staff. We initially came in with a straight LC zoning. We went to zoning commission, found out they were giving information from an application that was filed by a previous development over a year before. We deferred it. He had a contract-go-hard date. He had to have a decision from council by tonight. We dealt with staff, we back and forth over conditions. It's been an arduous process, but Mr. Riddle has gone above and beyond trying to satisfy staff on this, and still, we have more conditions. to satisfy staff on this, and still, we have more conditions. They want us to put our buildings right up on the street, what's going to happen when Lakewood Drive or Fisher Road need to be widened? You're gonna have to condemn his buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Epler.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
Good evening.
Evening. Mayor, member of the City Council, my name is Jonathan Charleston, my address is 201 Hay Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owners and the developer, all of whom reside here in the city. I'm gonna start out by saying that, uh, the owners, the property owners and the developer ultimately would like to do just like you and I, and that seek the highest and best use of their property. Everyone wants to do that. Tonight, the property owners request that City Council follow the recommendation of the zoning commission and rezon this property from single-family ten, uh, single-family ten to LC, uh, LZ with conditions, those conditions set forth in your package. As Mr. Riley mentioned earlier, uh, this property has been used for rural purposes, uh, for probably since the nineteen thirties, and, uh, they had come to enjoy that type of use, and quite frankly, the character of the area is, has changed and will continue to change from a rural setting to that of a more commercial setting. As Ms. Epler pointed out, uh, the recommendation of the planning staff contained what we believe to be some un- additional but unreasonable conditions. She mentioned the multimodal, quite frankly, uh, we studied that, tried to figure out what's intended by it, but it hasn't been fully developed by your, your staff, and we would suggest that that be left out. I think there was some question about the, uh, the split on the, uh, on the zoning commission. I think probably they didn't understand it, just like we didn't understand some aspects of it. One of the, uh, members of the zoning commission was trying to understand why the, uh, the multimodal, uh, requirements were being, uh, imposed on this particular piece of property. Again, I would point out that the character of this area has changed substantially, and the, uh, the current property owner should not bear the burden of the changes in the area. So let's talk for a minute about why it makes sense to grant this request. As I mentioned earlier, uh, the most fundamental and treasured principle in the United States of America is that property owners should be allowed to develop their property to its highest and best use. And it's, it gets kinda difficult when you live in a, in an urban environment, because from time to time, you have planners that come in that, uh, wanna impose restrictions on your property. I wanna tell you, Mr. Mayor, what color your house should be, you know, and, uh, those restrictions, in this case, I would suggest are substantially more burdensome than they need to be. So I would only argue that the burden of the, uh, the changes in this condition should not be borne by the, by the property owners, and we would respectfully ask you to, uh, follow the recommendation of the zoning commission. Thank you. I might add that there was an email that I have here that indicates, it was questioning why a gas station is even mentioned there, and why was there an issue regarding the gas station. This is from the planning staff, and they said, "I think just because Scott sees that as objectionable." I, I don't think that that's a reasonable standard, that's a subjective standard, we should deal with objective standards.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Lonnie Player.
Good evening, Mr. Player.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'll try to be as brief as I can. Uh, you've heard, uh, from my colleague, Mr. Charleston, uh, you've heard from Ms. Epler, and you've heard, most importantly, from the property owner, uh, about why this rezoning is sought. Uh, we have been fortunate to receive zoning commission approval, we have, uh, voluntarily given up five potential uses of this property, they're included in your packet. Most importantly, we've agreed that the back half, the half which would abut the existing neighborhoods, uh, but for the installation of utilities to service the commercial portion would remain wooded, and would remain as a buffer zone until such time as, uh, Mr. Riddle, uh, deemed it feasible and appropriate to build multifamily, uh, not commercial, multifamily, uh, residential housing on that tract, and that might be never. This could well be a fifteen-year plan we're talking about, we have no leases in place, we have no deals even at the, uh, at the, at the real talking stage at this point, uh, nothing committed to writing. What we have is an opportunity to procure property, uh, from the Rileys and allow them to move on with their lives as they, uh, as they wish to do, and as you've heard tonight. Um, you've heard from staff themselves that this property currently zoned SF-ten is bad, um, for its current zoning, in that it has a large, uh, I believe it's a Duke Power transmission line easement running across it, that is a high-tension transmission line, you can't build houses under it. And it cuts, it bisects the property diagonally, it'd be very difficult to locate a neighborhood there, to lay one out, and that's why one is not there. If, um, the additional, uh, requirements, uh, suggested by staff are, uh, are, uh, allowed by Council tonight, that will likely result in Mr. Riddle not closing upon the property, and the practical ramification with that, of that, I would submit to the Council would be that, uh, it is likely that the Rileys and the Stricklands would not be able to sell their property to anyone in the near future, given its unsuitability in its current zoning, uh, in its current zoning state. I would also point out that the, uh, though the school, uh, school board cannot take a position with respect, uh, affirmative or negatively with respect to our application, uh, they are in favor of the signal, uh, that is to be, uh, that is to be located to, uh, service the elementary school throat, uh, there, I believe on Lakewood, uh, on Lakewood Drive. I would point out to the Council and remind the Council that Mr. Riddle is paying for that signal out of his own pocket. He's also paying for, uh, turn and decel lanes on Fisher Road, oh, excuse me, on Lakewood Drive to service that throat. That would not happen if he does not close on this property. Uh, finally, I would point out to the Council that of the hundreds of homes within the area, uh, that would be notified of our zoning, uh, of our request for rezoning, only two folks have shown up in opposition tonight. I think that the silence speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Player. Where's our Sergeant of Arms? Just kidding. Thank you, Mr. Charleston. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Joe Riddle.
Okay, we will have time for questions, but we'll put him on last speaker.
Mr. Mayor, your rules don't allow, um, time for rebuttal, certainly if Council wants to suspend tho- suspend those rules, then you can, but under your current rules, there is no rebuttal time.
If we just move him to the last speaker, is that allowed? Is that considered rebuttal?
Under your rules, all sides, uh, complete their speaking, and then the opposing side, uh, speaks.
Alright, I'm not sure that answers my question, but go ahead and call the next speaker. Madam Clerk.
The next two speakers, sir, are speaking in opposition. The first one is Mr. Michael Starling. Mr. Michael Starling. The second speaker is Ms. Tracy Starling.
Officer, would you check the hallway for me outside, please? Alright, thank you.
So, my, the, the final speaker would be Mr. Joe Riddle.
Mr. Riddle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Um, I don't need to say a lot, I think that, uh, everybody's done a good job in speaking in front of me, um, but I do wanna say this, that, uh, in, the Rileys, of course, had, had stated earlier that they've owned this property since nineteen thirty-nine, which puts them way ahead of the schools and way ahead of most all the development out, uh, Lakewood, Fisher. Uh, my family got involved in about nineteen seventy-four in a development that is now called Gates Four. It was Irongate, built in about nineteen sixty-six. Uh, but I do wanna say that, uh, I ran the club for a couple of years, um, when I got out of college, uh, and, uh, lived there for quite a while, and, uh, you know, grew up to love the place. And, uh, it, uh, it means a lot to me, uh, to be able to do a nice development, and, uh, there I would, you know, like to really do a nice development that would complement Gates Four. I do not wanna stump my toe down the street from, uh, my father's pride and joy, so, um, that's the main thing I wanted to say. The other thing, too, is that, uh, you know, the, the City Council and the staff worked really hard, uh, for a long time with some outside help to develop, uh, our unified development ordinance, which, uh, I'm not real sure how many pages there are there, but I can tell you this, a lot of the reason that, that y'all developed the UDO was to protect neighborhoods, and, uh, I think you've got, uh, uh, an ordinance that does that, and, uh, we've already gotta follow that ordinance, which, uh, can be pretty arduous trying to follow it and, uh, obey it, and so, I think you, you worked hard to get that, uh, that tool there for you, and I think it'll do the job. So, I appreciate your, uh, your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Close the public hearing, go to Council. Mayor Pro Tim Davie.
I just wanted to give staff an opportunity, I think, um, Mr. Harmon or Scott seemed like they had some questions based on the presentation so far.
Um, as far as, just in general, or...
Do you have questions?
Oh, as far as, oh, the, uh, the multimodal, um, of course, the, when staff put comments in about, uh, following that multimodal plan, um, those, you know, the roundabout, things of that nature, those would be DOT projects. All we are talking about is the things that would occur on the applicant's property. Um, that's, you know, that really goes without saying, we don't make applicants do improvements on other people's properties. Um, so, I'm not, not sure where the confusion in that part really lies, but, you know, obviously, something like a roundabout on property they don't own, uh, doing sidewalks and stuff on the other sides of the street really has nothing to do with this project.
So what specifically do, are, are you, is staff requiring? Just to make it clear to the applicant.
Alright, um, Ms. Davie, I think the, this picture shows what we were after. Uh, this is, would be an internal, uh, accessway on the applicant's property. It would be our thought that something like this would be what would be constructed, uh, not, uh, the, uh, massive improvements that they were referring to, uh, off-site, Mr. Harmon's already spoken to.
Mr. Crisp.
Yes, sir, um, a few things. Mr. Mayor, um, the issue of a multimodal appearance is not an issue because neither of those roads belongs to the city. They both belong to North Carolina DOT, Fisher Road as well as Lakewood, and so we have no, uh, involvement there except on the side where the property is, to ensure that there are sidewalks and that they meet our uniform development, uh, ordinance. The other thing I wanna point out to you is, that property is not suitable for single-family homes. You see those power lines, you cannot build single-family homes under and in a very close proximity to those power lines, you can't do it. And so, the quandary here is what does he do with the property? The only thing he's going to be able to build is under conditional zoning, it's just that simple. Uh, Mr. Riddle has said he will leave that buffer, uh, there between that housing development, uh, to the left of your screen, until such time as he's ready to develop it. But I just think that, uh, this is the only solution to it. The issue of the gas station, as Counselor Charleston said, that's subjective. We can each of us sit here and decide what we don't want to see in a rezoning procedure, but the reality of it is, the owners of said property do have some inalienable rights to do things with their property, and that's where we don't wanna cross the line to begin to dictate. When we do that, then I'm gonna tell you what side of the bedroom you gotta put your bed on. You with me? And so, we need to be very cautious there. I just wanted to get that in there, and I would like to make a motion so we can get it on and then go from there with discussion if possible.
I can't stop you from making a motion, Mr. Crisp. We do have some other speakers, though, if you'd like to hear from them first.
Alright, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Colvin.
Uh, I guess my question would be for, uh, I guess the counsel of Mr. Riddle, or either Mr. Riddle, maybe. Uh, I think Mr. Player said a couple of things in, in here that I just needed to clear up a little bit. Alright. Alright, first of all, uh, Mr. Riddle, thank you, appreciate what you do for the community. Uh, I think Mr. Player mentioned that one of your concerns, um, is that you don't wanna be obligated to using the back part for multifamily, is that right? Is that, is that a...
No, 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 no.
Didn't you say, maybe it's contingent upon what?
We've, that, the back portion is to be left, uh, wooded for now, but for the installation of utilities to service the commercial portion. That portion will be zoned multifamily, um, it will be left wooded but for the installation of those utilities until such time as Mr. Riddle, uh, determines that it's, it's feasible to put multifamily back there, and that may be fifteen years from now. If I was unclear, I, I apologize, but that was, that was what I, I, I meant to say, that, uh, it's going to be zoned multifamily.
Let me correct my attorney.
Alright.
It's gonna be, if, it's possibly gonna be rezoned to limited commercial conditional zoning. What we try to do is, is this tract is large, and, and I would agree with Council, it was too big to all be commercial. So, we've, we're, we're really asking to develop it in a mixed-use type way. So, the apartments, the apartment layout was to help buffer, uh, and this was something that, that staff, you know, likes to see. So, we, we, we laid out apartments. Right now, I think apartments are overbuilt in Cumberland County. I don't think there's a need right now for apartments, and that's why I had Mr. Player mention that this could be a fifteen-year plan, it could be a, a long plan before all the property's used. I mean, i- i- if the market turns, then, then maybe there'll, there'll be some apartments done, you know, within a short period. But, but, uh, that was laid out because it worked for a mixed-use plan, but it will be zoned, potentially rezoned LC, CZ, it's not rezoned multifamily.
And in my own defense, Mr. Colvin, let me say this, it's difficult at, at this stage to talk about, to talk about things in terms of definites other than the rezoning that, that, that we're trying to achieve here, because we don't know what's going on this site, other than, we, we don't know how the site's gonna be laid out. What we are offering is to have that remain in, in its, in its current wooded condition, um, for the foreseeable future.
And, and what was staff's recommendation on that? What, was that consistent with what you guys were recommending, that it, that it stay wooded for indefinite amount of time?
Yeah.
Okay. And the last question I had, I think your other, uh, presenter, uh, mentioned that you had an issue with the setback, with the new setback, you know, as you know, we're trying to, uh, they're making some very good attempts, and, and, and a lot of it's in our direction of trying to beautify our community with not just the regular asphalt commercial boxes that we have an oversupply of. So, some of the ideas they're bringing in with the, the setback differences and, and some of the beautification, is that gonna be an issue that presents a problem for you? I think she mentioned something about, uh, the setbacks, if the wor- road was widened, and how would that be treated, or what's your concern about that?
We'll ask Ms. Epler to address... We'll ask Ms. Epler to address that, since she addressed it with the council, if you don't mind.
One of, one of staff's comments was they would like to see the commercial buildings pulled up next to Lakewood and/or Fisher Road whenever those frontages are developed. And on streets that are not major thoroughfares, that may be a viable solution. But in this case, Lakewood Drive and Fisher Road both have the very, a very good potential of being thoroughfares. They're already high-traveled areas. When the Department of Transportation comes in and decides they need to widen those streets, if our buildings are only sitting 25 feet off, that we're 15 feet off the right-of-way, that means that building is going to have to be condemned for the Department of Transportation to widen their road if they're already maxed out in their right-of-way. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Wright?
I think this is for the city. I'm a little bit confused as to actually the design and basically what she's showing us and basically what you're saying as far as what's going there, the roundabout, the road, the sidewalks on each side, the double roads going. I mean, is it, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but my second question is, where does the school buses come out from the school? And where they, are they coming out on Fisher Road, or are they coming out on, on Lakewood?
From the elementary school, they come out here on Lakewood.
Okay, they're going to be coming right out, right in front of the business?
Correct.
At that, at that light?
And that's why they're, I think right now that the buses actually may use this one, this exit.
Okay.
But the, the school system has said that, you know, they would change their bus routing, their internal bus routing if they were able to get a stoplight.
And the school is all right with that?
Oh, the school is very much in favor of a stoplight.
Of, of the stoplight?
Yeah.
Okay. And the question is, I guess, to Mr. Riddle or his people. And I understand the owner is, the owner of the land is ready to sell, and I really appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Riddle, and the comment you made about your father and that you wanted to do something that he would be proud of. You, you have a vision of that corner right there. Could you tell me a little bit about what you see there?
Well, I mean, that, you know, we route, we have some signs that DOT let us put to guide people. One thing that it was always difficult at Iron Gate, or you might call it Gates Four, is that, you know, back when I was young, I remember it was, seemed like it was way out in the country, you know? I mean, just like the Riley's, they were way out in the country. I remember going out there when I was young, before my father was involved in playing golf at the old Iron Gate, and I think I got lost. It was like going to, going to the buffet place down in Lumberbridge, you know? Chasens. I don't know if y'all ever went to Chasens, but you used to get lost going to there, too, you know? It seemed like it was an hour away. And, you know, it's, it's a front door. I mean, you know, those schools, probably the, you know, Gates Four's popularity is, is probably number one because it's secure with, with the guards, it's private, but number two's got to be the schools. And the schools are the, are the number two, or maybe even the number one drawl to live in that area. And so certainly, I don't want to go at my front door and build something that I wouldn't be proud of and that everybody wouldn't be proud of. And right across the street from those two nice schools, I mean, those are really high-ranked schools, you know, it's probably the most desirable district in the county. That's why it's grown so much. But I plan to do something architecturally there that would be better than, than what you normally see. And your UDO, I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, your UDO is loaded with, with landscaping and plants. I mean, I did the Chick-fil-A, I was involved in that. There's almost too many plants there. At some point, they'll have to pull some. They're going to overgrow each other. I don't know if you've ever done that in your yard, but, so when you plant, plant that close together and they get larger later, you have to thin them, your UDO protects you there. I mean, it's going to look good. And, you know, when people drive around Fayetteville and look at the projects that, that don't look good, it's the old ones that, that don't have any landscaping or, you know, weren't done nice. But I, I don't think your, your new projects in town all look pretty good. I mean, BJ's, that looks good. The Panera Bread or Ramsey, that, that looks good. I mean, I think that, you know, your staff has got you a, a UDO that protects you on that. So we're just asking for you to approve it without additional conditions. There are already 800 pages.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moan?
Oh, thank you, sir. Mr. Harmon, got a question. You know, looking at that southwestern Cumberland and northeastern Hope multimodal congestion plan, I believe that came out of our Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
It is from FAMPO.
And so when they look at Lakewood and they look at Fisher, I, I would imagine that those projects would be put into our local tip or the state stip, you know, the State Transportation Improvement Program, and there'll be funding for that, and then there'll be a local match. Do we know if this intersection is, and those sections of Fisher and Lakewood are even in the stip or the tip?
I don't believe that they are right now.
But this, it's a long-range unfunded?
Yeah, long-range. This is, you know, what FAMPO has proposed as their long-range vision for that area.
Okay. And then, so there is no widening going on right now or funded? And so for the meantime, there would be the acceleration or deceleration in turn lanes put in, in lieu of a four-lane divided road?
And that's what you see on the, the map that's in front of you. You see some of these, these darker gray, almost black areas. Those are your, your decel or turn lanes.
Okay. No, that answered my question about the stip and tip and funding. Thank you.
All right, council, seeing no further questions.
Mr. Mayor, council, I move to approve the rezoning of property from SF-10, Single Family Residential District to LC slash, it's Limited Commercial Conditional Zoning District located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Fisher and Lakewood Drive effective this date.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Jensen?
Question.
Mr. Moan, is that a question related to the motion?
That is a question related to the motion. You said reapproved, but then there's agreed-upon stipulations and staff recommended conditions. Which conditions are we voting on?
The conditions, my motion is inclusive of the conditions from zoning.
Well, we, just to clarify, with the conditional zoning, only the conditions that the applicant is willing to put forward are the only ones that, that can be included. So if you're...
They're presented to zoning, right?
They are presented to zoning. So what your motion at this point would have to be is that it's based on those conditions, whoops, let's see here, these conditions, these three that have been submitted by the applicant.
Then may I restate the motion, Mr. Mayor? Then I, I move to approve the rezoning of property from SF-10, Single Family Residential District to Limited Commercial/Conditional Zoning located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Fisher Road and Lakewood Drive with the conditions approved as stated by the applicant, conditions one through three, effective this date.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Any further questions related to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, that meets your second. Okay. Further questions, seeing none. Council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is an eight to two with councilmembers Colvin and Hurst voting against. Thank you. Go to item 9.04, which is the rezoning of property from an MR5 or mixed residential to an NC, which is a neighborhood commercial, location of Locust Street. Mr. Harmon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at 715 Locust. I'll give you an idea of where this property is. You have Southeastern Boulevard on the south side of, just south of Russell Street. Locust Street turns off of Southeastern Boulevard. And this property is basically located in between, you've got commercial zoning on the property beside of it and the, and half of the property behind it. Then to the, the eastern side, you have residential beside of it and half residential behind it. And then you have industrial zoning on the south side of the street here. As you can see again, almost everything along Southeastern Boulevard, as you know, is heavily commercialized. And then low-density residential for the main part back here along King Street and Locust and Chestnut in that area. This does fall into our downtown district as far as our land use plan goes. Our downtown district allows for a wide variety of uses as you would have in industri, in downtowns. So everything from residential to industrial is recommended in, at times. Just a few photos of the property. This is the property itself, heavily wooded at the moment. This is the industrial warehouse to the south. This is the tobacco shop commercial area to the east, I mean, to the west. And this is the, the two residential properties to the west that back up, that back up to the side of this project. You can kind of see a little storage building behind one of the homes here. That's kind of the, the back property line, so a lot of these trees on back here are part of the property in question. The zoning commission actually denied this project. It's coming to you on appeal. They cited the proximity to residential properties and that there were some uses, especially restaurants in the neighborhood commercial district that could have alcohol sales that they felt was not a good fit for the neighborhood. City staff, however, had recommended approval of the zoning. That's based on, in the UDO, an NC district is one of our districts that serves as a buffer area between generally residential and, and heavier commercial districts. And in this case, it's a buffer between three different types of, from heavy commercial to industrial to residential. With heavy commercial industrial properties around this, and because of its size, it's not real viable for residential lot. And then our 2030 growth plan calls for new development in areas where the infrastructure's already in place. Any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
Mayor, we have three speakers, one speaking in favor and two in opposition. The first speaker in favor is Mr. Ranny Nimmicks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Ranny Nimmicks. I reside at 2808 Sky Drive here in Fayetteville, and I'm one of the property owners here. I promise to be very brief. I would like to redirect you to the maps that Mr. Harmon discussed with you and so that you will realize that the properties to the north, south, east, and west of this lot are predominantly heavy industrial and heavy commercial properties. There are 13 houses on South King Street, which are the closest residential units to this property. The two houses that abut this property were built in 1920. Of the 13 houses on South King Street, three of them are already zoned heavy industrial. They were built between 1920 and 1950. So I submit to you that the market has determined that there is not a market for residential use when nothing has been built in that immediate area for residential in the last 65 years. When we had a contract to sell this property for a use that required outside storage, I met with Mr. Harmon to try to be in compliance with the UDO and with the land use plan. And we determined that heavy industrial would be required, or an industrial zoning would be required in order to have our buyer meet his needs for this property. So we, we voided that contract. And in meeting with Mr. Harmon, we determined that the, the least objectionable zoning would be neighborhood commercial. So that's what we have applied for. I would remind you that the staff recommended approval of this zoning request. It does fall in line with the UDO and the land use plan, and for that reason, we would like to get a zoning that would make it marketable. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Rebecca Arrington.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Rebecca Arrington, and I reside at 4421 Atlantic Avenue. But I own properties at those two houses that you saw, plus the lot beside of it and a house across the street, so 308, 311, 314, and 316. This land has been in my family since 1901. And yes, we do have to concede that this area is in transition, but it, they, we're, we're still there. And we ask that you protect our right to still live there. I still have family members that, that reside there. Our main objection to the restaurant or small neighborhood is we and Councilwoman Davy can concede to this. We fought long and hard with the city of Fayetteville and the police department and spent a lot of tax dollars with Upscales, which Upscales obtained their permit to open up where the old Waffle House was, saying that they were a restaurant. And just because it's a restaurant doesn't mean that it's going to be all food. And if anybody remembers Upscales, it had murders and shootings and stuff there all the time, and the police were there. There were calls for service that were too numerous to mention. We don't want another Upscales. We can't afford another Upscales. The city doesn't need another Upscales in their budget. We are not opposed to commerce. We have lived with Union Corrigating, Finch Oil Company, and currently, we have a brand-new, the building that you saw that looked really bad with the industrial can there is now beautiful. It has a nice asphalt parking lot, and it's going to be a NAPA auto parts citywide distribution. And, and, you know, we're okay with, we're okay with commerce, but we're not okay, and that would be directly across from there. That wooded lot is directly across from there. And I just don't think that we need to, to, to open up that door. I think if there were a small business that wanted to go in there, anything that didn't sell alcohol or encourage people to go and party, that's also a very small lot. If they put a berm, it's not going to leave a whole lot of place there for them to have, to make a business. So I ask that you do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Mike Thompson.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Mike Thompson. I live at 7273 Wood Drive. I own property at 304 South King Street. Basically, I will echo a lot of what Ms. Arrington said. The major concerns are the prox, and the zoning commission's concerns as well. The proximity to the two homes that are to the east of the property, it is just a few feet, so any type of business that generates is allowed will be detrimental to the folks who live in... who live in, in those two homes, and that is their home. And also, just the proximity, and then, of course, the current zoning that is proposed does allow for alcohol sales, which can't guarantee anything, but it does open a door. It does open a door, which we have seen a history in the neighborhood of being abused and causing crime in the community. I would like to point out that while the homes may be older, there has been money spent in maintaining the homes over the years, or else they wouldn't be there at all. I would like to also point, point out that the zoning commission voted unanimously because of the concerns of the residents of the community, whose land does butt up against the property, voted unanimously against this rezoning. Again, the, the homeowners are not against business in the area, but do have serious concerns based on the history of what has happened in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Close the public hearing. Mr. Moan.
Is this appropriate time to ask staff or the speakers a question?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, um, this would, you know, both for staff and the applicant, would, given the, the concern for alcohol sales, tobacco shop-type things, can we, would, is it possible to convert this to a conditional zoning where the applicant and a, and the parties agree that it could be a neighborhood commercial minus, and you say like, anything that sells alcohol, or you, you eliminate some things that would possibly make them, uh...
We can do that. We can't do it at this meeting.
Okay.
The council would have to vote to send this item back to the zoning commission as a conditional zoning and then have the zoning commission rehear it. But that certainly is something that could be done. I think that, I won't speak for the applicant, but I think that may be something that he would be willing to do as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I would be, I would be agreeable to no alcohol sales on this property.
Okay, and then for the, the family members, you know, I would ask them if, if that'd be something they would be willing to discuss with...
This would be the time.
You know, and that way, you go through everything that's in the neighborhood commercial, you know, what's available in there, and you could potentially agree to eliminate things that you do not want. So, it's still neighborhood commercial, but it's not, you know, going to contain the fears you have as, as family members. Would, would that be something you'd be willing to have this come back? You think so? Thank you, all parties involved, staff.
Mayor Protim Davy.
Well, with that, thank you, Councilmember Moan, for that, for clarifying that information. I would like to move that nine point oh four gets sent back to staff for further review and looking at a possible conditions added to this rezoning.
All right, there's a first and a second, kind of snuck up on me. Mr. Crisp, you had your light pulled. Did you want to discuss?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with the motion, but I do have a question on the...
Go right ahead, sir.
Ms. Harmon, if we do send this back, does the applicant have to pay any additional
Typically, if it's sent back by council, we have not made them do that in the past.
And my point here is in so much as both parties are agreeable to it going back. I think the only real concern is not a commercial establishment, but one, but to make sure that there's no alcohol there. I don't, I don't think we ought to penalize the applicant by requiring him, him to pay additional funds. That's my concern, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Did you want to consider that? Mayor Protim? Yes, okay. Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, are we sending it back to staff or are we sending it back to the zoning commission itself?
Back to zoning commission.
That, that might need to be clarified just a little bit, because I think in your motion, you said staff, but it just needs to be said as zoning commission.
Sent back to the zoning commission. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to push that, Mr. Mayor.
Can we, um, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Harp.
Can, can we also add to that, Madam Mayor Protim, that the, just for clarification, that the current application fee that's been paid will suffice, and no additional fees will be required?
No additional fees required.
Is that okay with the second? Very good. Okay, further discussion, council. I'll ask for your vote, please. Sorry, that's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Counsel, I'd like to take a five-minute break at this point, if we can do that, please.
We getting there?
Council, item nine point zero five is the amendment to the city charter, chapter, is that city charter?
Yes.
Amendment to the city charter, chapter thirty, to create a new overlay district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
This is a text amendment. As you mentioned, it's to create a new overlay district that we've titled suburban activity center overlay, or SECO. And as y'all recall, this is part of our redevelopment toolbox that we've been talking about for the last year or so. This particular ordinance was an outgrowth of the Ramsey corridor studies. And the idea is to create these centers of activity that are going to help with the redevelopment of our existing corridors and provide some catalysts for future development that will occur in that vicinity. Here's a drawing of what it perhaps could look like. In this particular instance, we've used this, and there's a blow up. But I think I've got some better ones here that are more reflective of exactly what we're talking about. Here's a better picture with the wide sidewalks, sort of an urban-type center that could occur along our corridors. Here's an example from another community of exactly what we're talking about. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because you've heard it before. There are a variety of things in here that are incentives that will really help move these things forward. We deal with some flexibility about open space and parkland. It's approved as part of a master plan. Higher densities allowed. And in general, with the buildings pushed up closer to the street, there's reduction in landscaping. So here's a drawing that shows the interior street layouts that are part of the package and how it could be configured. But perhaps this picture is a better one. If you take a look at this series of drawings and look at the left one first, you'll see sort of an existing situation that's common to our corridors throughout Fayetteville. Large retail center in the back, out parcels in the front. And then you can see that this offers an opportunity for redeveloping of these properties by adding new buildings. Perhaps these are office buildings that are added here in the interior and the one along the main road. And then later on, all the out parcels are gone and a more urban configuration is created. So that's the, sort of, the thought process behind this particular district. Both the planning commission and staff recommend that you approve this. And I'm here to answer any questions and also to remind you that this is a public hearing, although no one has signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. We'll open and close the public hearing. Council, questions for the staff? Mr. McDougal?
No questions, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approval.
Mr. McDougal, seconded by Mr. Wright. Discussion council on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Nine point zero six, amendment to city code, chapter thirty-three, to create a new regional activity center overlay.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not quite the same thing as the suburban activity center, but it has some of the characteristics of it. Certainly, you can have a master plan that would look similar to that. But again, it's an opportunity to promote redevelopment as well as new development. And again, if you think about the Glensford Road area, the mall area, that area has got an awful lot of really high-end type of uses. And the regional activity center could give us an opportunity to further limit the uses that might go into that area to help support that. And so there will be the potential for you to sort of address use issues, development characteristics, and have standards that support the regional activity center activities and uses. Again, both of these ordinances are ones that we will certainly involve the public in before they're applied in any location, obviously. And the suburban one will probably only be applied when you have someone wanting to do it. But I can see the regional activity center perhaps being unilaterally applied by city council for the purposes of protecting the characteristics of the area. So both planning commission and staff recommend that we approve this as I presented it here tonight.
Did you say this was going to be used to further limit?
Well, let me give you an example, Mayor. Again, I used the Glensford Road area. That area is owned community commercial. That allows a lot of quasi-industrial type of uses, mini warehouses, auto repair, all sorts of other uses like that. And so perhaps in that area, we get with the property owners and say, your area is primarily a restaurant and retail area that has certain characteristics. Perhaps it would be a good idea not to have some of these uses allowed in this area. Also, we could talk to them about what other services they might want in the general vicinity to help support them. And it could create an opportunity for a planning session with the property owners to see which direction they want to go. So we think it's a worthy tool to have in your toolbox, and we think it could help facilitate some of your goals and objectives.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. Madam Clerk?
May we have no speakers for this item?
We'll open and close the hearing. Council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve...
Second.
...this item.
Mr. Wright, seconded by Mr. McDougal. Counselors, a discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please.
You ready to go home, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Clerk, that is nine to one with the mayor voting against. Items of other business. Mr. Colvin. Yeah, Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion to reconsider item eight point zero two four, the uninhabitable structure demolitions that we discussed earlier. There was a particular couple that had signed up for a public hearing that did not get an opportunity to speak. And since we had reconsidered one of the properties, I wanted to make sure we could, see if we could amend that to rehear that entire...
Second that motion.
Yes, sir. So Mayor, you first would have a motion to reconsider. You would vote on the reconsideration and then move to the substantive motion.
Thank you. And we do have a motion and a second by Councilmember Wright for reconsideration of item eight point zero two four.
Call for the question, Mr. Mayor.
Hang on. Madam Attorney, do we have to reconsider all of consent to do that, since that was passed in consent?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you could make a motion to reconsider the item that was offered, that specific item.
Okay. And that's what the motion was. So, okay, we're fine. We have an appropriate first and second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. Counsel, I'll ask for your vote for reconsideration of the item. Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, that is nine to one. Councilmember McDougal voting against. All right. Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since I made the original motion to add that to the consent agenda, I would move that for item eight point two four, that based on the previous motion, that we add four fifteen Cedric Street and four three nine Cedric Street along with five one one Haddock Street to be items for discussion at our November third work session.
Motion by Mr. Arp, seconded by Mr. Colvin. Counsel, seeing no discussion, I'll ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Mr. Voorhees, item ten point zero one, is National League of Cities Business Meeting Voting Delegate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's traditional that any jurisdictions that's represented at the National League of Cities consider one of their members to be appointed as the voting delegate for the purposes of any business meeting that may be conducted. So I'd advise counsel to consider among those attending the National League of Cities meeting to appoint somebody who's attending to be that voting delegate.
Do you have a list of who's attending, Mr. Voorhees?
I believe counsel has that.
Mayor Protim, Davey, Councilmember Colvin, Councilmember McDougal, and Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
I move that we nominate Councilmember Mitch Colvin as a voting delegate for the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting.
Second. Made by Mayor Protim, seconded by Mr. Hurst. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote.
It'd be pretty sad for you to vote against yourself.
Item ten point zero two is moved to consent. And ten point zero three is strategic performance report.
Yeah, shouldn't there be an alternate also, Mr. Mayor?
Just in case Mr. Colvin doesn't make it.
Certainly, we'll be happy to do that if you'd like to nominate somebody. Mr. McDougal?
Oh, no, no. Wright, Councilmember Wright, I nominate Councilmember Wright. I make a motion that...
Second.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote.
All right, so Chalmers pushes Colvin down the stairs. Wright, you got it.
Congratulations, Mr. Wright. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Voorhees?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Item ten point zero three will be presented by Ms. Rebecca Rogers Carter. I would note that Assistant Manager Reinstein instructed me that he has told her, given the late hour, to restrict her comments to forty, no more than forty-five minutes, so...
I can assure you, Mr. Manager...
It will be you and him. To approve.
No, I won't either, sir. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'll make this as brief as possible. The agenda item ten point oh three reviews the strategic priorities set forth in the fiscal year 2014 plan and reports progress made toward each priority. As you know, the strategic plan sets the direction and the goals of the City of Fayetteville and helps guide the actions of city council and staff. We also worked to narrow down our strategic plan priorities in fiscal year 2014. And most importantly, we began to track our performance. Strategic planning is the process that assists council as representatives of our community to plan for our future. A strategic plan is the blueprint for operationalizing an organizational vision. Now, that's a mouthful. But in other words, how do we make our vision a reality? And as the City of Fayetteville continues to grow and thrive, the city council looks to chart that course with the strategic plan. This model aligns city programs and spending with your long-term goals and your critical needs. And as you can see from this graphic, the strategic plan in the burgundy box at the very top, that feeds into the budget process and provides direction. It prioritizes your services and your infrastructure needs. It's very important. Basically, planning is about analysis, and strategy really is about synthesis. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here, but I did want to mention that the city manager's office has the overall responsibility to ensure that the strategic plan is implemented. Our strategic plan has five main elements. You all have seen this before, the vision, the mission, the core values, the goals. And the goals this year have objective statements and performance measures, and we have a one-year action plan. The report that you have in your materials this evening and on your dais goes into further detail of those elements. The green box, I do want to mention, in this cycle represents the budget process. This past budget cycle, we successfully and sometimes painfully transitioned into program budgeting. City staff worked to develop the program inventory of sixty-nine citywide programs and financially mapped them for the budget process. Without defining those programs, it really is impossible to identify those objectives, what we're actually trying to achieve, and performance measures, how well we are moving in that direction. And then we're going to move into the operational performance measurement. The transition to the program budgeting and performance measurement was a change management process here at the city. We developed a team structure to build that accountability, and we implemented a communication and a training plan. We called this effort the Pride Program, meaning that will focus on program performance, results, and integration into our organizational culture. I placed a copy of our Pride Program, I think we call it our Pride Program booklet. It has our standards and operating procedures, and that's just for your reference, so you can take that back with you and let me know if you have any questions about it. More than five hundred performance measures were identified and aligned to the city's overall strategic plan. Goal champions, goal teams, data analytic teams were formed to build that foundation, the systems to collect, analyze, measure, and evaluate our performance. So everyone here played a critical role, and I wanted to make sure that I mentioned tonight that I'd like to actually recognize this Pride Team. The city manager's office appointed the goal champions for each of the six city's strategic goals. These goal champions have met continuously since June and have formed goal teams to refine the programs, performance measures, and work on those strategic initiatives. They serve as the lead and point of contact for reporting in all aspects, really, of the assigned goal. And I'd like to recognize these organizational leaders for their efforts to implement that city's strategic plan. We've got for Goal One, Ben Major, the fire chief. Goal Two, Ms. Rochelle Smalltoni, our deputy city manager. Goal Three, Rusty Thompson, E and I director. Goal Four, Kelly Blazey, transit assistant director. Goal Five, Dwayne Campbell, chief information officer. And Goal Six, Tracy Davis, corporate communications director. I wanted to also share with you this other facet. We developed a data analytics team comprised of the best analytical minds in the city. The core membership, we held at ten, just to keep it at a reasonable level, but they do represent a cross-section of all city departments. Anyone and everyone, though, with any responsibility or interest in data analytics or data management is welcome to these meetings, and we do see them come and go. The city manager formally approved the data analytic team charter and the first round of their recommended performance measurement standards. And tonight, I would like to introduce that team. They really should be recognized for their extraordinary work. This is above and beyond their duties here at the city. And again, they've recommended already performance measurement standards that were approved by the city manager. They work on best practices for performance measurement. And they've also assisted some of the goal teams in developing their performance measures. And finally, they're preparing for the first performance measurement audit. And so tonight, I think he's the sole man left standing. I would like to recognize Chris, if he'll stand up. This is Mr. Chris McMillan. He facilitates the data analytics team, the DAT, and he keeps this team moving forward. We really appreciate his leadership. He's here tonight representing the DAT. I think they all wandered off. But the other team members are listed on your screen. We have Greg Kason, Mike Hill, Michelle Hare, Sherri Leggins, Teresa Faircloth, Luis Colazo, Keisha Kinsley, and Anthony Kelly. Great set of people moving this city forward in this particular area. So as you could see, we are deliberately moving from a trustless city government into one that it's dedicated to transparency and accountability. Not only do we just need the facts, ma'am, we need to also tell our story. So we're focusing on measuring what matters and driving home really the importance of that quality data set and good data management. That has to come first. So much of our time lately has been spent on defining data, those data attributes, and working with departments and understanding what their processes are. And we are actually still building that systematic approach to all of that that will eventually let us benchmark and evaluate our successes with specific performance targets. And I know Councilmember Art, we always talk about that, specific performance targets. We're not quite there yet, but this particular report moves us a little one step forward. So at this point, I'd transition into the 2014 report. Specifically, I'm going to go through fairly quickly. You all have had an opportunity to review the report. I'm not going to mention every detail in it because it's fifty pages long. But there are some accomplishments, I think, that need to be recognized, but more importantly, and we need to recognize where we haven't actually hit the mark. The report begins with an overview of our strategic planning process. Remember that this is the 2014 strategic plan that was developed actually in February thirteen. So this report highlights that important work that we did in incorporating the input from citizens and staff with the surveys that we did. It also speaks to the work that we did in narrowing down those priorities so that we can really focus on the work that we're doing. We're gearing up actually for another employee survey. I wanted to let you know that will be coming out in November, and that information will come to you through your strategic planning efforts. The report also outlines the strategic planning framework for fiscal year 2014. You may have noticed that in the report, the actual adopting council was pictured in the report. I wanted to just mention that we certainly didn't want to misrepresent the different councils and their strategic planning frameworks. So that one focuses on the vision and the mission and the core values and the goals that they set, so that's why that happened. But I will say that the strategic planning elements and the work that you all are doing now even will be represented in the report coming in January. So we will transition that over into fiscal year fifteen. The city's mission hasn't changed very much. It just really identifies for the City of Fayetteville our role in pursuing the community's vision, the core values. These are values of the City of Fayetteville, and they're the defining characteristics of how we operate. And this particular performance report follows what I call a cascading methodology of performance reporting, and that is really gauging our performance through the achievements in each of the city's strategic goal areas. So council sets the six goals, which outline the path that we need to take in order to reach the community's vision. And for each goal, we've identified targets for action and performance measures. Now, if you remember, at the beginning of fiscal year fourteen, Fayetteville was one of the very few, if not the only, I think it was the only, large municipality without any performance management system in place at all. So we've come quite a long way. And it's really your council's focused on accountability and transparency that really allowed us to do that, so I want to thank you for that. Tracking and trending and benchmarking performance measures results, this is going to tell us how effective and efficient that we are being, and this report moves us a little bit closer. In fiscal year fourteen, city council added the goal Safe and Secure Community, and it was really focused on building that safe and secure community. And under this goal, the report that you have in front of you includes police and fire performance results. And I wanted to mention this, that they are from calendar year thirteen, and it also includes specific updates on your strategic initiatives. And the reason I mention that police and fire numbers are calendar year is because that they report that data for accreditation purposes and to the public and to outside agencies. And as a team, we kind of made that decision that we were going to follow suit. And as time goes on, you'll see, as trending, we're able to build that data set, and trending, that six-month lag isn't going to matter a whole lot. Frankly, a lot of the initiatives that you put into place now really won't have an impact on performance in a month or two anyway. So just so that we can be consistent with their reporting, we're going to use that. But this report also includes a lot of other performance measures, crime and clearance rates, police and fire response times, public safety staffing levels, citizen result surveys. It also includes some significant advancements in your targets for action. One of them was the sector lieutenant models. Another one was when the police department produced and launched their educating kids about gun violence program. That continues as a strategic initiative for your fiscal year fifteen. It's a great program. It's been heralded as a success. I've actually seen the video, and it's pretty phenomenal. And an update, I also do want to mention that one of this council's top five priorities is actually additional resources for the police department, so you will see that flow over to your next report.
Hey, Rebecca, before, can you go back to that slide, please?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's late, I know, but I am going to ask this question.
Yes.
On the targeted targets for action identified, one of those targets was enhanced gang reduction and prevention strategies. And then we have our performance measurements identified beneath that. What would it take to get the fast student activity pass as one of the targeted performance measures that we're measuring to make sure we're implementing that?
It wouldn't take anything but you suggesting it, and then we were going to take it right back.
I would suggest that because when the council passed that, the intent was to offer alternative activities for our high schools, you know, students who wanted to participate in athletics or band or after-school activities that couldn't participate because they had transportation issues. And now we're nearly six months down the road, and we still don't have, you know, any real effect with that. And I'd like to see that to be a targeted measure.
Okay. And can you repeat that, sir, so I can...
It's the fast student activity pass, I think is the correct term. And the pass system allows these students to ride the bus after school if they're an identified student who's participating in an extracurricular activity at no cost.
I believe we took action on that, maybe May or June.
I think I was in the room when you did. I recall that discussion. But that is a great point. And as we refine these measures, we are still in goal teams, still refining the measures, still coming up with ways to align these measures with your strategic planning goals. And I appreciate that, I appreciate your thoughts on that.
Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, I think part of the problem, as I recall it, is they're trying to eliminate a problem before the problem ever starts. And I think, I think really they may be moving in the wrong direction. In other words, I think they're trying to prevent an unauthorized user of the pass, but they... but they need to go ahead and issue the PASS, I agree with you. And, and recognize that as a problem that they need to somehow or another fix, but not just not issue the PASS. Go ahead on and issue it and then start working at it, because you know it's going to be a problem that, you know, one student may pass it off to another student, but, you know, you know, work at fixing that, you know. And it may be, you know, this, this technology of fingerprint or eye print is so, you know, it may be something that we need to do, so...
Not to add the performance measure.
Okay, thank you.
No. Okay, thank you. So the second goal, we'll move on to the second goal, is diverse and viable economy. This is where the city is fostering economic health and vitality for our community by creating jobs and supporting strategic industry. This report in front of you includes performance measures such as the estimated tax base, the median wage for Fayetteville, unemployment comparison, and jobs created. We also included statistics from your community development department. The target for action under this goal is to implement local business initiatives, you have an update in your report regarding those particular enhancements. The establishment of the Economic Development Task Force was tabled until further direction by council. However, staff's been focused on the creation of the Economic and Business Development Department, which will continue as your top five, one of your top five policy priorities in fiscal year fifteen, so you'll be receiving an update on that. Okay, so Goal Three, moving on to Goal Three. The third goal of the city is to be a well-designed city with high-quality infrastructure, and here we really focus on the quality of our built environment. Performance measures such as the Quality of Streets Index, building inspections, and code violations are included in the report. We also provided an update of the Ramp Program, which is a tool for improving the quality of life and revitalizing your deteriorating neighborhoods. Tonight, you heard from Mr. Chet Omi, our Ramp Chair, about that program. Additionally, a target for action under this goal was to increase street maintenance funding and shorten the time for resurfacing, so you're going to notice a red indicator here, the city is currently operating still under the thirty-six-year cycle. No additional funded, funding was provided in fourteen, and in fact, the fifteen budget included a reduction in maintenance and resurfacing funding. But under the Gateway Initiative, litter crews were reinstated, and the outdoor adoption program was adopted in fourteen and is underway, and I know that some of you are working in that area as well, and that initiative will, I'm sure, flow over to the next, to the next strategic plan report. So the fourth goal of the city is to be a highly desirable place to live, work, and recreate. This goal ensures that the city promotes a good quality of life for residents and visitors. We've included performance measures that are relevant for this goal, such as park and recreation program participation levels, results from the airport customer survey, the transit NTD report, performance statistics, the litter index, and measures for residential collection, and the recycling program. The targets for action under this goal were to revisit the funding plan for parks and recreation and to develop that traffic flow improvement strategy. So you're going to notice the red light indicator on the park and recreation, and then over the fiscal year, staff assessed the traffic flow, and I know that you all have heard from them in March, they've done some work with NC DOT and built some strategies around that. Okay, so Goal Five, City Council recognizes that when leaders are moving in the same direction, the organization has the capacity to complete its directives, and we all get there faster. To that, and we've included the city's retention rate, per capita tax burden, and the city's bond rating, among other performance measures. We've also provided an update on the city's transition to program budgeting and performance measurement, and the development of the new city appreciation and recognition, and recognition program called the Core Value Awards. Our IT department's been very busy implementing several large IT initiatives, and moving into fiscal year fifteen, the top policy priority is going to be to implement a citywide customer service initiative, which is really underway now. Finally, we're going to take a look at Goal Six, which is citizen engagement and partnerships. There's been quite a lot of progress in this goal area. Staff launched the city's first government access channel and continues to build the programming and content. The city launched the FayettevilleOutFront.com, which is that civic engagement piece on the website. The communication plan is under review, it's, it's completed and under view, review with the City Manager. Developing and maintaining partnerships was another TFA, a target for action, and we completed that with the Community Conversations Event. So I guess in closing, I would just say that prior to the City Council retreat, I will be preparing another strategic plan report for your review, and that's going to be based mostly on your strategic initiatives within that plan. We won't do a whole nother full set of actual performance numbers, because we're going to be planning for the budget document, those estimated fifteen and sixteen numbers. I did want to mention that at the end of the strategic planning development process last year, staff surveyed council to try to identify ways that we can help your retreat be more effective. Council, the survey results indicated that count, the council input sessions and the priority exercises were some of the top-rated sessions. Also, council gave the direction that the strategic plan would be a two-year plan, meaning that revisions to the vision, the mission, the core values, and the goals would be revisited every two years based on that election cycle. So this year, we're going to be focused on the one-day retreat, and that's February thirteenth, so save the date, and you'll be focused on performance, objectives, and priorities, and resourcing. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd ask if there are any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, Rebecca, you made a mention during your analysis that you put together some of the best minds in Fayetteville, and I noticed that you were on the top of the list in that, saying that you had...
I'm not part of the ten.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers Carter. Any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to move that we accept the report as presented.
Second. If I could just thank Rebecca and Chris here, there's just been a tremendous amount of, of work here to, to build this program from the ground up. It's been great to watch, and you just sort of let them run, and their creative juices and energy has been great to watch, so I hope you'll appreciate that growing up over the next few months and seeing those results, great reports.
Mr. Crisp?
Ms. Carter, I just want to tell you, this is, in my estimation, your best one yet.
Thank you, you say that every time.
Well, no...
But no, this one really is.
That makes me feel terrific.
You're getting better every time, but this is very comprehensive. It shows the green lights, the red lights, the caution lights, and where we are, very comprehensive report, that's, an awful lot of work went into this, and we appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
It's your best one ever.
Thank you.
Ever.
Say that next year, too.
Mr. McDougal?
Even I'm beginning to understand.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to break.
We would ask that you move to, to accept the report.
All right, council. Mr. Colvin, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wright, any discussion, any more discussion? Ask for your vote, please. That is unanimous, Ms. Carter, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.